Let's begin our Council session. Ms. Jones, will you as the lead patient please stand?
Heavenly Father, please hold our servicemen and women in your strong arms. Cover them with your sheltering grace and your presence as they fight for our protection. Please remember the family of our troops. We ask for your blessings to fill their homes. May the memory of our fallen soldiers be one of gratitude for they died for our freedom. Inspire us to be peaceful on this planet we call home, for all the world is our family. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Our blessed region is the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the resolve of the Constitution and its laws.
Welcome to all, and we're pleased to have a standing room only audience here tonight. Interest is definitely encouraged. I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make before we even call the roll tonight. Part of my job as Council President is to set the agenda and to run the meetings, control the meetings, administrate the meetings, whatever you want to call it. That's my job. So I'm ready to make just a couple of comments, and I hope you take them in a good way because it's for the benefit of us all. I want to remind you that the Council meeting is to conduct business. It's city business, and it's our job to promote legislation, to discuss, to inform and keep your residents and council members involved and updated on the news. All of the audience and Council are encouraged to discuss and to participate, offer your opinions, whether they're negative or positive or neutral. You can offer them three minutes, and keep us informed on the issues. These meetings are for all of us. In the past several months, our meetings have become disrespectful and disruptive. I think we neglected to follow some of the guidelines and some of the appropriate procedures. And courtesy to speakers, all speakers. Residents who wish to participate may do so at the podium, or you're more than welcome to stand after the meeting and chat with whatever. Most of the Council people do hang around for a little bit, and they would love to meet you and chat with you. Sharing with neighbors during the meeting is really counterproductive. Maybe you can't see it or hear it on this end, but we can hear it from this end, and we can hear it from out here sometimes. It's very disruptive up here because this sound system is not wonderful, not at all. And it does disturb neighbors around too as well. So I'm going to ask you to save your comments. And also your enthusiasm for whatever speaker has made something which you agree with or don't agree with. So if you could hold that for just a little bit, that would be extremely, extremely helpful. And also, I'm going to tell you that interrupting on a consistent basis, talking out of order, we say when the legislation is on the board or on the table here, and someone is still trying to talk, they're still trying to discuss, and the chairperson says "out of order", that means you're out of order, and we need to move on. The other thing that we also need to do is to be noted. I know some folks, when you come to the podium, you give us your name, you give your address, and then you speak. Here at the Council table, the Councilman asks to be recognized. And we don't say, "I recognize Mr. So-and-so, I recognize Ms. So-and-so." We don't do that, but I do say "yes" or "go ahead." And at that point is when you start to speak. Speaking out is out of turn, and it's again, very disrespectful. I have requested that anyone who is not agreeable and doesn't like the, and doesn't think this is appropriate behavior, I am going to ask the chief to escort them out of the meeting at this point. Come back another time. That's basically my comments, and I felt I had to make them because, again, it's my job to keep this meeting in control and in order. And the past several meetings, past several months, have not been that way, and I did feel that we had to make some comments. And I'm going to ask your cooperation, both in the audience and here on Council. And with that, my sermon is done, and we will move on to your roll call. Adams? Jones? Here. Sepharati?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Brownlee?
Here.
Chojansky?
Here.
A.G.?
Here.
Albers?
Here.
There is an addendum this evening, and there are no minutes. Are there any communications this evening?
No.
No. And there are no Council reports, committee reports at this time, so we will move to the department reports. And this evening we have Captain Wheeler in place of Chief Dusen. Captain?
Thank you. I'd like to start off by reporting that we received three letters of retirement from the Fire Department.
One came from Captain Plackett.
I'm sorry. I'd like to report that we've received three letters of retirement. Captain Thomas Plackett, effective date of retirement to June 4th, 2014. That's 25 years of service he gave us. Firefighter Dave Gussley, effective on June 16th, 2014, with 28-plus years of service. And then firefighter Ken Schultz, his date of retirement effective July 2nd, 2014, with 32 years of service. At this point, this puts us to 32 firefighters on our roster, which at this point we're down about eight firefighters. And also, it looks like we may have another firefighter leaving shortly going to another department. I guess because some firefighters aren't taking tests, and it looks like he's moved up quite a bit in this department. Also this week, we're observing EMS week. What that is, is the National EMS Week's been observed annually since it was first declared by President Gerald Ford in 1974. And what it does, I know we probably all heard about this each year when we talk about the EMS week, but what that does, it brings together the local communities, the medical service, medical personnel, hospitals, kind of like, just kind of a recognition for the job these paramedics, EMTs, the first responders do. And then also, the last thing is, I'm sure most of you have seen us out there, we're continuing to flush and fire hydrants this month. So we're going to do that till the end of May. So if you turn on the water, it seems kind of rusty, at least let it run for 15, 20 minutes till it clears, and we should be able to pop it off again. Okay? Thank you, and then we move on.
Thank you, Captain. Law Department, Mr. Montella.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. No repartee, I'd just like to thank any veterans or all the veterans for their service to our country, and hope they have a great day.
Thank you. The Police Department, Acting Chief Poplar.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're participating in the DARE graduation on May 15th, and we have 250 students graduating on that date. Officer Spoh has a good job in terms of conducting the ceremony. I believe it was the largest DARE graduating class we've had in the last six years since the mayor reinstated the program. We also continue to receive restitution from Garfield Court for the fociid toxicology product fees that we have to pay in order to process blood work, that kind of thing. It's kind of offsetting our budget somewhat. And we also receive money from University Hospital Task Force Grant to conduct the fociid checkpoint. And we also had one of our officers receiving an award, and we received some prizes for the clicker ticket award presentation. He had 49 citations, that was Officer Kevin Posey. We'll be participating in Memorial Day parade on Monday, as time to go all the time, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Human Services Department, Mrs. Bogdan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, the License Bureau on Northfield. They made a donation of $754 to Maple Heights Food Pantry. We thank them very much. And also, today, Mr. Bob Dover, he is a member of the Maple Heights School Board, came to donate $550 to Maple Heights Senior Center to help with our expenses. We wanted to know that the program here, the senior program in Maple Heights, began in 1974, which makes 2014 the 40th anniversary of services to the community. With that, we are going to have a combination 40th anniversary and fundraiser for the Human Services Department on Sunday, June 22nd, from 1:00 to 5:00, at St. Andrews Eastern Orthodox Church on Maple Park Drive. Father Amel and his parishioners were kind enough to allow us to use their hall free of charge, and our friends at Mr. Chicken will be donating all the chicken dinners that we could sell that day for, as a fundraiser. We hope you join us. There'll be baskets for you to bid on, gift baskets. There'll be some split the pot drawings, split the 50-50 raffles. The ticket price is $20, and Mr. Chicken will be giving you a $5 gift card to take home with you for your support of this program. We hope to see you. If you would like to donate either, if you'd like to purchase a ticket, you can give me your reservation today. The tickets will be here at the Senior Center starting next week. If you'd like to donate an item for a gift basket or a gift card, we'd be happy to take that from you. And again, we're trying to lift the awareness of our programs of the Recreation Department, the Food Pantry, and the Senior Center in the community, and to try to help again pay defray some of the expenses. We hope you'll see you there. Thank you, and a report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogdan. Finance Department, Ms. Irene Cole.
Good evening. Our report is very short. Just want to acknowledge that the Finance Department is involved in audits, so we're working on our audits for 2013. Then also recruiting staff. The two staff persons currently employed in the Finance Department will be leaving at the end of this month, so basically to be myself and two staff in the report.
Thank you, Irene. We now come to Citizens' Residents' Comments. If you'd like to step up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and you do have three minutes, please.
Can you hear me?
Not yet.
Well?
No.
Can you hear me?
The red button. You got to turn it side to side, like...
Can you hear me now? My name is Don Firum. I have a brokerage, real estate brokerage in Bedford, Ohio. Don Firum, F-I-R-U-M. And I'd like to address the point-of-sale timetable with the city. It's taken four to six weeks to have an inspection done. After the inspection is done and the repairs are completed, it's taken another four to six weeks for the re-inspection. Takes about seven or 10 days for the repair agreement to get approved by the Building Department. Most of the buyers out there have a 30-to-45-day escrow. If they're doing a 203K home improvement loan, they may have a 60-day escrow. And if they're buying a HUD property or Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, they charge about $175 for every 15-day extension and escrow due to non-closing. Between the inspection and the re-inspection, it's taken three months for a property to get an occupancy permit so a title company can transfer the property. I'm just wondering what can be done to speed this process. Bedford, Bedfordites, Oakwood Village have a three-to-five-day turnaround for their inspections to be done. And seven to 10 days, their inspections are printed and available to the purchasers and the brokerages. So I just want to address everybody here to find out what's going to be happening. There's no way that the loan commitments for these people run out, the buyers are paid for extensions, and a three-month turnaround time is almost impossible to deal with in the real estate industry.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Antoma, living at 14204 Granger Road, and that's in District 3. My comments this evening are related to fiscal watch and recycling. When this administration came in, there was a surplus. This administration has been negligent in managing your financial responsibility to the residents. The previous administration was making cuts because the handwriting was on the wall that there would be short hauls. This administration and some members of Council decided to reverse all the cuts, and that is why we are in this situation. The residents are being penalized because of your incompetence. We pay $15 a month for our trash and recycle. We have a reasonable expectation that this bill is being paid to Waste Management, not to come to these meetings and find out there were almost a half a million dollars in arrears. I have a copy of the fees, and I've passed them up to some of the people from Waste Management, and what they charge per household, and it is under $15 a month. What people object to is paying for a service they are not receiving. That is the reality of it. You can sit there and say whatever you want, but it doesn't make it possible. Residents have every right to be upset with the way the city is being governed. Thank you.
Lindavoe, Cap. I spend most of my time at 15901 living, and I just, I can't stay here anymore and listen, so I have a comment to make. When Mayor Carabino was mayor, we took significant cuts and layoffs. They were significant, to try to balance the budget. During his last year in office, a police and fire levy were passed, and an income tax was passed. When Mayor Lansky came into office, the city was sitting in a good position. It was a good, it wasn't great. We lost a lot of help. Residents didn't know any different because all of the employees picked up the slack. You didn't see anything that wasn't done because we tried to get it done. When Mayor Lansky came in, streets were in deplorable condition. The buildings, City Hall, and Senior Center, and other buildings in the city were ready to fall down. They were seriously in disrepair. We, and I speak for him as part of the administration, okay? We are stewards of these buildings on your behalf, on the residents' behalf. So, City Council at that time, some of them are still sitting here, borrowed a reasonable amount of money, reasonable amount of money. They didn't borrow 10 million or 12 million or whatever. They borrowed a reasonable amount of money to put in the pool that many of you who were here heard residents come up and repeatedly ask us why we aren't doing more for the children, and wanted the pool to be there. So the pool was put in. Repairs were made to the buildings, okay? Repairs that honestly, if you went into City Hall or you were in this building, you know we're in, that we needed them. We needed them. Thirdly, the vehicles that were run, the Service Department vehicles, and the Senior Center vehicles, and the Recreation vehicles. Our guys could ride in the street and see the city of Maple Heights under the, from the floorboards because they were so old and so in disrepair. Again, a reasonable amount of money was borrowed by some of these Council people. They approved it. Everything was done, and many of you came up to this microphone and thanked the mayor for all he did. Now, could anyone, did anyone in this audience see the economy tank the way it did? Did you anticipate how many homes would be foreclosed on in the city? Did you? Because if any of you did, you should have come up here and told all of us that this was going to happen. Did any of you anticipate that the municipal funds from the state of Ohio would be cut to the tune of $2 million and $4 million over the time? Since Mayor Lansky came into office, we are an inner-ring suburb. It is very difficult to get business to move in here. Ford and GM are just not looking this way. So he did the best he could, as did all of his administrators. And I take offense to when someone comes up and says money has been mismanaged when it has not, at least not my department. We try to do all we can to make sure the budget is balanced, to make sure that services get to you in the best possible manner. So, you know, if you knew the economy was going to take, you should have come and talked to us, and maybe we would have known. Maybe you knew more than anybody else. And I'm sorry, I really, I had to say something. I can't sit here and listen. It's an insult not only to Mayor Lansky, not only to City Council, who voted to borrow that money when it was, when it was looked at that it could be paid back in a reasonable amount of time, and to all of us who are administrators in the city and are doing our best to serve the residents. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. Excuse me, Madam Chairman.
Bob Haylon, 142216, Oakwood Park. Linda just reported to you, saw that compound of what I'm about to say. Not only do we cut federally, statewide, countywide, oh, I forgot to tell you, foreclosures Taxes didn't get collected. The Lincoln taxes are in abundance in Maple Heights. The real estate taxes have not been paid to us. People did not pay their real estate taxes, and part of them on the docket today, we have Waste Management. Waste Management, billing for that, is added to the real estate taxes. It's not been paid. Rita's an arrears to the city, too. Regional income tax. You figure out roughly a million and a half from that, and roughly $2.5 million from the real estate. And you blame the city on mismanagement? No. Why put the blame on our federal, state, and county government? They did this to us. I don't want to break up the platform, but the county has $180 million in the black. Sure they are. They cut us. Not only did they cut Maple Heights, they cut Garfield, Bedford, Bedford Heights. And you point the finger at this administration? You people are not reading the newspapers. We don't have a local paper here. We have a Plain Dealer that sometimes is inadequate. Read the Plain Dealer. They do cover some of it, but I just said. No, this administration is not guilty of mismanagement. They did what they could with what money they had. They've asked, they pleaded with the state, with the county to give us the money. Rita, Rita income tax. We've asked, and they ignore us. They don't know us, but what they know, they collect it from us, they don't pay it back to us. I think the mayor and his administration did what they could in tightening the belts. They've had tightened the belts.
Tightened.
Thank you.
My name is Kamal. That's my first name, J-A-N-D-A.
What's your last, did you say your last name?
We had a concern, and we are not pointing fingers on anybody in any way, but we do have a very big concern actually, because we are investors in the property. We buy properties, renovate them, and we rent them. Up to now, we were fine. We go with all the legal stuff, you know, we buy up, get all the permits, we repair them to public, to the city inspectors, and everything. But now that they are not done, the inspection are not done in a time limit. This is the biggest problem. We done a house, and every time we are scared that somebody is going to break in there. We finish the house, then we go for inspection after that. I went on 14th, I got inspection for 25th June. So the house is going to be stayed back in, and when the inspector comes in, if you say a couple of things are wrong in there, then another four to six weeks. I don't lose revenue as well. Also, I say every day scared that somebody is going to break in, then I'm going to start from zero. So I'm not blaming anybody. I need, if anything can be changed, either we, as investors, let us bring the tenants in there and have the inspection when they are in there, or any other remedy, you can do that. So it would benefit both us and also the city because people, when they want to move, they want to move in now. That's my concern. Thank you, everybody.
G.I.L.L.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, under your standard, I own 30-plus central properties.
No, 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 I didn't get your name.
G.I.L.L.
M.I.G.?
I own 30-plus central properties in this town. We are very despondent with the control inspection. They are backed upstairs, so we have to wait six weeks. Houses are ready to inspect, tenant can move in, but we have to wait for the report to type for a week. The re-inspection will be another six weeks, so we are doing three months rent. And if we want temporary equipment, the city cannot inspect the property and die. Some facilities like Beddington, Garfield, they have three to five days inspection time, but we have six weeks. So I would ask for the temporary equipment or any other. Can I repeat that? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne Majoros, M.A.J.O.R.O.S., from 14408 Toke Avenue. I get very upset when I hear a lot of people arguing. I mean, it really gets me upset, and I start, my blood pressure starts to go up. I'm sure we have the same feeling. It's over, it's done with. You know, stuff with the fan, we're in this situation. Let's start doing something about it. Stop blaming everybody. It's not going to get any better. The people on Wall Street got all the money, and we don't. It's over. Let's start building something from where we are now. Let's get together, make a plan. And I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of confidence in Council because I don't feel like I'm empowered as citizen to come up with some ideas. And when I do come up with some ideas, it feels like they get blockaded by everybody else who has a different idea because they live on the street next to mine. You know, I mean, not that specific, but I mean, let's work together to do something. Let's create together and maybe have a brainstorming session of, let's have one project or one area we want to work on. Let's put something together. And no idea is out of the box, is too far out of the box. Let's come up together and have something positive come out of this situation. Stop dropping bombs on everybody. Don't be fighting against each other. Calling names not going to do anything. We need to get together and say, okay, stop happening. Where are we going to go with it now? Can we do anything? Do we need to go somewhere else to get the resources? Do we need anything else? If you don't have grant writers, can we find some somewhere? Can we use the schools in the area? There's plenty of business schools around here, and I think they're pretty good at what they do. Even if we have to hire, not hire students, but somehow get students involved so they feel empowered in their city. Let's get the Girl Scouts back together. I mean, recycling is over, done. All right. I have a list of places, if any good ones, my email. I have a list of places where you can bring your recycling, all different kinds of recycling, paper, plastic, whatever. Let's get, see if the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts want to start collecting cans again. We've got places to drop off paper. These are fundraisers. And by the way, we're raising good money on these things, so we might actually want to think about that as a city to put it in one think about that as a city to put it in one little location. So I wanna look at some positive ideas. If anybody can come up with them, I'm willing to work with the committee.
Moving on to the legislation.
Resolution number 2014-37, a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew the contract with Waste Management of Ohio for two years to eliminate the recycling program in its entirety, effective immediately, to provide garbage and waste removal services in the city of Maple Heights and declare emergency.
This resolution is on its third reading. May I have a motion for adoption, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Sepharati?
Thank you. I would just like to state for the record that I believe that eliminating the recycling program is a step backwards for the city. We already pay fifteen dollars a month, and with the sheet that was passed out, you can see that it's, we are overpaying for this service, and we're going to eliminate it. So I just would like to have that on record, and also, a lot of residents have also voiced their opinion that they do not want it eliminated. The overall impact on the environment, even though it is, everybody keeps saying just eleven percent, well, that's eleven percent more that's gonna go into the landfill. So it's not gonna be reused, it's not gonna be anything else, and, you know, maybe we'll go back outbid it again, but two and a half years, let's say it's twenty, twenty-four percent more in the landfill. So that's just my opinion. Just wanted to make that on record. Thank you very much.
And I would like to clarify some of that. I'm not sure if you attended that meeting, Councilman Sepharati, but the gentleman who is our service director in this, in this area for Waste Management said that although we will not be using the blue bags anymore, the truck will be picking up everything and continue on with the blue bags if you have them for this, this won't go into effect for several weeks here. But no more blue bags as far as recycling. Everything's going to be mushed up together. They do have a new furnace in the recycling area and the whole Waste Management area, and everything is going to be converted into a fuel. So it isn't going to waste, and I think this looks like it's the wave of the future. And I, I'd like to believe him since he has burst in his trash. Okay, we went, may I call the vote?
Madam Chair.
Is there any? Councilman Brownlee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am glad that, I forget her name now, the last woman who spoke. She emailed all of council with her concerns about the garbage, and I thought about it, heard from Councilman Sepharati, his concerns, thought about it. I requested numbers from the administration, what the cost is, what we pay Waste Management annually to collect the trash. And it cooperated with the numbers that I already had, which annually it costs roughly one million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Here on the contract itself that we have from Waste Management, it projects that next year's cost will be one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. That's one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. We collect from our residents almost one and a half million dollars for trash pickup. That money goes right into a fund. It's Fund 251, and it's only for trash. So there's enough money to pay the trash bill. There's more than enough money to pay the trash bill, and it's your money for only paying the trash bill. It, it's assessed on your taxes. It's not a tax, it's a special assessment that gets collected through the county. So there's more than enough money to pay for your trash as it stands right now. So I cannot, I cannot say that I'm gonna take the money that you've given to us for trash pickup and then spend it on something else. I will not do that because you gave us that money for a particular reason, and I expect, and you do rightfully so, expect that money to be spent for what it was allocated for. We are over four hundred thousand dollars in arrears to Waste Management. Why? I don't know. Because you have paid us plenty of money to pay that bill. So I think this is just a symptom of a larger problem that we have in Maple Heights, and I will not go for the short fix. Take your money that you've given us for trash pickup and spend it on something else. Therefore, I stand against this.
Is there any discussion?
That assumes everybody's paying their trash bill. That's the problem. People aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're not paying their income taxes, they're not paying their trash bills, they're not paying their property taxes. That's why there is a shortage. Do you get it? I mean, there's not that much money there. That's why the city has to cover the difference. And it's not that complicated. If everybody paid, we would have enough money, but not everyone is paying.
Call the roll for adoption.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Call the roll for adoption, please.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
You're out of order, Mr. Brownlee.
Madam Chair, are you going to entertain any more discussion?
Mr. Brownlee, I'm called for the...
I appeal the decision of the chair then, so that we can entertain more discussion.
Madam Chair, it's the third reading already. I mean, we have plenty of discussion.
There is a, there is a call for adoption on the, on the books here. Let's call it.
Madam Chair, point of order. We've already been through this.
Jones.
We've been through this. Point of order supersedes the main motion.
Chief, would you please escort Councilman Brownlee out for this evening? I have, have made a statement. I have to follow through with it. You were asked to be respectful.
I appeal. I am trying to appeal to the chair. It's in our charter. It's in our codified ordinance. It's how this works.
Show him the door, please.
Sepharati? Jackson?
Yes.
I apologize to you all that we cannot run our business as we are.
Georgianski?
Yes.
Again, you're out of order, Mr. Brownlee.
AG?
Yes.
Adams? The ordinance, the resolution passed by the vote, five, one, two. Resolution number...
Dila, would you mind going out and asking if you could possibly take his camera with him?
Yes.
Resolution number 2014-38, a resolution authorizing the finance director to dispose of surplus equipment, which is no longer needed for public purposes, on the internet at govdeals.com and declare emergency.
May I have a motion to suspend the rules and place this resolution on its third reading? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Call the roll to suspend, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Sepharati?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Georgianski?
Yes.
AG?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
May I have a motion for adoption?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the roll for adoption, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Sepharati?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Georgianski?
Yes.
AG?
Yes.
Adams? Resolution passed by the vote, six, zero. Ordinance number 2014-39, an ordinance amending section 1484-04 and 1484-05 of the codified ordinances, increasing the fees for a notice of foreclosed properties in the city of Maple Heights and declaring emergency.
May I have a motion to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson? Is there any discussion? Any discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
That's my brother.
Mr. Sepharati?
With respect to Ms. Jones and the ordinance, I think there needs to be a little bit more clarification on the process of who's going to be doing what. It was brought up in caucus, so I think maybe another reading will be given on this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Council, we already have a motion to suspend the rules and put it on a third reading, so if we all vote no, then it will go on a second reading. Is there any other discussion?
Jones?
Yes.
Sepharati?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Georgianski?
Yes.
AG?
Yes.
May I have a motion for adoption? Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.